I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight thankful for the city of Goddard, thankful for the opportunity to come together and make decisions that are going to shape the future of this city that we all love so very much. I just pray that you would be in this room, fill this space with your presence, God, and guide us in the way that you would see fit. It's in your gracious name we pray, amen.
Approval of the agenda? Do we have any questions? You want to change anything? You need to change anything on the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Item C, citizen, approval of the agenda, sorry. Item D, citizen comment. Anybody from the audience that would like to speak?
Can't let it go. Jeffrey Jones, 1069 Arbor Creek Court. It was brought to my attention this last week by some friends who live in the Old Town part of Goddard that their kids have to walk to GMS or the high school. Well, thank you. While I understand that that is, a lot of that has to do with school and busing and whatnot, the thing that they brought up was the fact that there are no sidewalks to get them from Old Town to GMS on 199th. It does pick up around Swanee area, there's two blocks, but from Third, Fourth, Fifth Street on, there's no sidewalks. Now, if I remember correctly, a few years ago, the city of Goddard hosted a transportation public, was anybody here for that? I don't know.
Have a walkability tour?
Yeah, the walkability thing. We looked at streets, sidewalks, and that was five years ago?
It was 2019.
2019, so at least four years ago. What's happened with that? 119, 199th is going to be horrible. We're getting ready to put the GS pickleball thing there, which is they're going to have access to softball parking. There's talk of putting the community center there. That is the narrowest street. No sides. You go into a three to four foot gully on either side. If you get a flat or pulled over, you can't on 199th. That is our busiest street, as I've been told by police officers when they like to pull you over. And yet, it's the worst street that Goddard has. So I would really be interested to find out what happened with that study and what the city, the planning commission, the county, whoever, has plans to do with 199th because once we start growing and we get that 11,000 people, that street is going to get narrower and narrower and narrower. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Anybody else?
Travis Bryant, 19 Chattanooga. I'm going to piggyback on that because Jeff stole my thunder a little bit, but I know that we have the talk today about the roads that are being proposed as far as Tanganika and then I think the road over in Star Bond issue. So my thought was the same as along with Jeff, except for when you go down that frontage road, I think it's getting more and more dangerous of seeing people walk down that frontage road, especially with the baseball fields now, knowing that we've got the Starbucks in, the Brahms in. Totally agree with that frontage road that's going to go in that they're asking the city to pay for, but I think there could be another sidewalk going there to go to those businesses because as those businesses could get more and more, and then along with the commercial that's going to go on the other side of 199th or 183rd, I just think that we need to look at whether it's a walkability or whatever, I think it may be time to do it again as we are getting more and more south. Would even love to see us somehow pull in some funds to do a, I think at one point in time, and I don't think it was 2019, I think it was before that, we talked about doing a overpass walk from north side to the south. It's what?
Same time.
Was it same time? Okay. The north side to the south side because we know we're all growing that way, but when you got kids, I mean, small town, I grew up in a small town, used to love to go to the convenience stores, to the Wal-Mart's, to whatever, right? Right now, it's just a matter, I hate to say it's a matter of time where some pedestrian accident happens in Goddard, so I think we should take a look at that.
Hold on a second. Micah, do we have an extra easement space in front of the north, the south coming through? Is there an extra easement space or like a sidewalk?
It's not easement, I think it's right of way.
Right of way?
We could put a sidewalk, it'd be in the right of way.
Okay. But we do have space for it though.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to look at it from an engineering perspective, but you know.
I might add, the R-Cut project is, has sidewalk in it.
I knew that.
And it will, from, from 183rd along the north side on the north front road, and, and will have a crossover through the R-Cut, a protected crossover there, but yeah, I don't know that there's much on the south side.
And I just think as a, as a city, we're, you know, residentially, we're growing north, but commercially, we're growing south, so we've got to have a way, and I mean, we're, we're still, I think the limit is 50, right? From Easy Street to just on the other side of 183rd, which is about 50 miles an hour. Or actually, we're 60 on the other side of 183rd, right?
Correct.
So I mean, we're talking 60 miles an hour for individuals to try and walk through there, so just a, just a thought.
Thank you, Brad, thank you. Anybody else? For once, twice, sold. Okay. Item F, consent agenda? Does anybody have any problem with accounts payable?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item H1, rezoning of Ben Healy property.
Honorable members of city council, this is item H.1. This is the Ben Healy land rezoning case number zone dash 23 dash 1. Quick background, while the company has submitted application on behalf of the developer Ben Healy, we zone a tract of land from R1 single-family residential, C2 general business district. The land is currently zoned R1 single-family residential, it's around 9.45 acres. The developer would like to build commercial properties in this area. The land currently has a horse barn on it. Final consideration for the rezoning will be before the city council, which will be today, and then final, of course, publication will be 30 days later. So you've seen this before. Black is the requirements of section 100 H.1-17. Purple is the comments from city staff. Feel free to interrupt me at any time if you have any questions about any of this. So number one, what is existing uses and their character and condition on subject property that is surrounding neighborhood? Existing use for the land is farming slash ranch operation with improvements. I will mention, this has come up, this has come up before where somebody mentioned that they thought that improvements meant the quality of life. Improvement is actually a building on land. It's a, it's a county classification for, for tax purposes, so if you see it's a ranch operation or farming and it says with improvement, it means there's a barn or a structure on it. If it says no improvements, that means there's no structure on it. It doesn't mean that it's impacting the quality of life. So somebody asked that question before, it's just a county classification for tax purposes. So to the north, the land is classified as road, ground, passenger transit, transportation. It's that's 54. To the east, the use is classified as farming, ranch land, no improvements. To south, the use is farming, ranch land, no improvements. To the west, the use is single-family residence detached and road, ground, passenger transit, transportation. What is the current zoning of the subject property and that is surrounding neighborhood in relation to the request? Current zoning for subject properties, R1 single-family residential. To the north is rural residential, R County classification. To east is C2 general business district. To south is planned unit development, PUD. To the west is rural residential. Is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped, vacant, as zone factor in consideration? As of no until recently, which was February 6, 2023, the land was in the county and the city had no regulatory authority over that development or zoning. Would the request correct in error in applications to these regulations? No, it's not to correct any type of irregularity or any failure in terms of application of zoning subdivision regulations. Is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such change and changing conditions? So as mentioned, US 54, commercial corridors beginning to infill, which is good for us. Of course, we have examples including Brahms, Camp Bow Wow, Starbucks, Rusty Bean, et cetera. So 54 is starting to develop out, which is great, so what we're seeing here is more commercial land being brought forward so that development can continue in that vein. Do adequate sewage disposal and water supply in all the necessary public facilities, including street access, exist, or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permanent subject property? So state sewer and city water are in close proximity and 183rd is currently paved. Would the subject property need to be platted or replatted or in lieu of dedication made for right of way easements and access control, building step back lines? So the subject property would need to go through the plating process prior to any permanent development moving forward. Developer has been made aware of this and this is typical process. Would a screening plan be necessary for existing or potential uses of the subject property? So yes, there is a property that abuts, which is a residential property in the southwest corner, there would be screening for permanent developments if they were moved forward with permanent developments. Is suitable vacant land or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? So C2 zoning has about 488 acres of the city limits. About 45% has been improved value of greater than zero, so improved value meaning that they put a building on it. So we're starting to see more and more commercial land being developed, which is good, and so as that development continues, we're hoping to bring about more zoning for commercial development. Is, if the requests for business or industrial uses are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? The requests for business and the resulting business could, that could occupy that area would increase potential services to the area. Number 11, is a subject property suitable for the use in the current zoning for which has been restricted? So no, R1 does not allow for commercial land zoning classification. When we annex land, the default is R1, and R1 is single-family detached, traditional residential, and so if anybody wants to do anything other than R1, they're going to have to go through the reason of the process. To what extent would the removal of restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning request, detrimentally affect other properties in neighborhood? It is possible that residential property in the county could be impacted by the commercial property. Typical requirements would be screening from commercial use. That is a determination by the county for property evaluation. It's typical that you would see any type of residential development be screened from any commercial corridor, so that would have to be something to be taken into account as this land develops. Would the request be considered consistent with the purpose of zoning district classification and the intended purpose of these regulations? So the zoning district classification is C2 general business district and is defined as such, and then the purpose of these regulations, which is the beginning of Article 1 of the subdivision regulations are outlined as such, and I do believe from reading the C2 general business district and purpose and regulations of these, that they do follow in that classification. In particular, I would say, yeah, that they do follow the regulations. 14, is the requesting performance of the comprehensive plan as a further enhanced implementation of the land? So the future land use map for 2025 shows the land as being general business district, so it is in conformance with the 2025 land use map. Page 17 of the comprehensive plan reads as follows, and the objectives being here, and it is mentioned right here, influence functional and efficient commercial development along the US 54, 404 corridor. What is the nature and support or opposition to the request? We haven't actually gotten any opposition to this request. The property owner of the residential development, who's in the southwest corner, did show up to the planning commission, but he had, when he spoke, he said he had no, he had no opposition to it, but no one else has reached out or said anything in regards to this. Support comes in the form of continued commercial growth, which is assessed at 25%, which is further enhancing the city's tax base. Commercial developments are assessed at 25, residential is 11.5, and so the city gathers more property taxes from commercial growth. Is there any information or are there any recommendations on the requests available from professional persons or persons with related expertise which could be helpful in this evaluation? So major corridors typically are zoned for commercial due to high traffic, which could be perceived negatively in a residential neighborhood, but is one of the key desirable metrics for commercial development. So typically, you're not going to see, you're not going to see residential developments really abutting 54 or a major corridor, usually you step back a little bit, but commercial lots do want to touch 54 because they have more potential traffic flowing through that area where they can capture potential clients or businesses, and so that's why you're going to see more cities typically having zoning for commercial or mixed use or something of that nature or industrial, abutting major corridors with the residential set further back. By comparison, there's a relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare outweigh loss and property value, the hardship imposed upon the advocate by not approving the request. So the city does not foresee any negative impacts as most of its surrounding areas are currently commercial use or proposed or commercial uses. So right across the street, you have Murphy's, Walmart. To the south is a planned unit development, and so we're not seeing anything that could proceed as a negative impact. And as mentioned, the property owner of the residential house said he didn't see any potential issue with any of this. So this is the property in question. This is Murphy's, Walmart, this is a planned unit development, this is the residential neighbor, house, the neighbor abutting the property. All of this right now is currently owned by Kansas Department of Transportation. This house right now, I believe, is under negotiation with them. This part over here is Kansas Department of Transportation. So the developer does want to rezone this for future commercial growth. He also wants to make the city council aware of his plans to possibly put a temporary bar development over in this area. This came up during the planning commission. This is just kind of a receive and file because officially, he would need to go through a special use application, which is in the process, but if he felt that both either planning commission or city council was not in favor of a temporary bar or seasonal use in that area, then he would just update that process, he would just stop doing the special use application. But planning commission, once they were aware of that, they had no issue with that at all. And so if city council is in favor with the rezoning, obviously they'd go forward with the rezoning, but if they had any negative impacts or positive thoughts about a temporary use bar, it would be, now would be a good time to tell them so that way he doesn't have to go through the process of applying for a special use. That bar location would be over here, this where there is currently a horse barn. And so he is currently working with Law Kingdom. This area over here would be converted to the bar and then it'd be outdoor amenities. Parking would be over this general area. The special use would be, like I said, for a seasonal bar, so it'd be only open when weather was allowable for people to visit this area. In the future, next couple of years or so, this whole area would probably be demolished and replatted for future permanent commercial development. So he's asking for the rezoning, both for long-term development purposes, but also for considerations in the short-term purposes of having an outdoor venue for a bar and a seasonal activity space. Financially, it'd be a small publication cost for the ordinance for the rezoning. Legally, it's approved as the form. It's recommended city council waive the reading of the ordinance and then approve the rezoning request case number zone just 23 dash 1. And if there are any comments about the, or thoughts regarding a temporary use bar, feel free to mention them now. Obviously, if it was perceived negatively, since a special use has to be approved by city council, first publication has to go in the city newspaper, then it'll go to planning commission, and then it'll come to city council in May if you guys wanted to see that. So at this point, if you have any questions or comments, feel free.
I think we're always wanting new things in Goddard. We're always wanting someplace we can hang out, spend time with family, have a drink, so I got no problem with it. I'm looking forward to it. What do you guys think?
He says temporary, what do they mean?
I mean, so. Temporary seasonal bar, basically, I mean, I hate to use the term of pumpkin patch. Have you ever been to a pumpkin patch? It's only open for a certain time of the year and then they close down when the weather becomes inclement, and so this is kind of something similar to that. It'd be an outdoor venue, and so you'd be able to visit it, but there wouldn't be long-term permanent structures there. In the future, there will be, that's why he's asking for a special use because it's only going to be for a short period of time when it's open, and it's only really going to be open for maybe a year or two, and then it's going away. Because the long-term future growth of it would be permanent structures, like you can see like a Walmart or CVS or Walgreens or something like that. So he's hoping to capture a niche in the market for a short period of time while it's available, and then it's, the whole thing's going away.
I don't, I don't have any problems with it. I think an outdoor bar would be kind of cool for the summer, especially with those ballparks right there. If your kid gets eliminated in the first round, you can go over.
You have a question, Brad?
No.
No.
Motion to waive the reading.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
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 Make a motion to approve the rezoning request case number zone 231.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Brent. Roll call.
Councilmember Fish.
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Mayor Larkin.
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence Collins.
Yes.
NABI Ordinance 921.
Thank you very much. This is item H.2. This is state-funded Star Bond signs. So quick background, Kansas Department of Commerce, KDOC, has reached out to see if the city would like to receive at no cost two signs marketing the Star Bond district. City staff have attached a memorandum of understanding, MOU, provided by KDOC. The signs are approximately 84 inches high by 36 inches wide by 0.5 inches thick. There's a concept image attached on exhibit H.2B. The cost would include two signs and installation paid for by the Kansas Department of Commerce. There is no cost to the city for the creation, delivery, or installation of the signs, however, the city would be responsible for long-term reasons. The city council would need to agree on two locations for the signs and authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding for installation and maintenance of the signs. So analysis, the city's obligation would be as follows. Provide Commerce with proposed locations. Secure any appropriate permitting and permission to have signs installed in a preferred location. Prepare installation sites prior to the date of installation. Installation site shall be clear of any debris interference or other objects, fixtures, or obstacles that would interfere with installation. And be present for the installation of signs and receive any maintenance guidance that may be provided. K, sorry, Kansas Department of Commerce's obligation would be as follows. Provide two signs for selective locations. Provide labor and material for the cost of installation and replacement, and in the event the signage is damaged, refaced, or destroyed, Commerce shall at its discretion provide one replacement sign or maintenance service in the amount not to exceed 10,000. After initial replacement or maintenance, the city shall be solely responsible for maintenance upkeep and/or replacement of the signs. So Commerce wants to give us two signs that look kind of like this, and they want to know, one, do you guys want them? And two, where do you guys want them? And if you say, yeah, we do want them, and you find two spots that you think are agreeable, they will drop them off, install them, and leave them for us, and then if in the event one of them is hit by a car or, you know, stray a fly ball or whatever, you have it, then they will replace it and maintain them. Long-term costs, of course, would have to be incurred by the city, so that's just something to take into account. If 10 years down the road, somebody runs into one, they would be responsible for them. These are two possible locations that I gave to the Kansas Department of Commerce just so we can get the application rolling. I mentioned to them that city council would have to either approve the two locations or come up with two alternative locations, and they are perfectly fine with that. As mentioned, they'll be dropping off the signs and doing all the labor costs, so there's no cost to the city, it's just simply a question of, do you want them? And if you do want them, where would you want them? This area right here, this colored area, this is all private property. Anything outside of that over here would be in public right of way or private right of way, this is Prairie Trail. This is Crown and Grand Slam, this is all public right of way, and then this over here is public right of way on 199th. Kind of looks something like that. Not to scale, just drop those in. Financially, non-lethal considerations, a memorandum of understanding, MOU, has been reviewed by Robert Polk and Mellemore Slane, and has been approved as to form. Recommendations to act as age recommend the city council determine if they'd like to receive the signs, determine the location of the signs, agree to authorize the mayor to sign the MOU. So open up. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Are the signs going to be in concrete or?
Yeah. So though, they'll pour a pad for us.
Oh, they will?
Yeah, and they'll drop the signs there in a pad.
I got no problem with signs. We take them and maybe the lieutenant governor might like me a little bit more.
As far as Keaton stuff, how do you feel?
We'll be okay.
With the motion?
Are we good with the location before we?
I think.
I think the location is a little good.
I'm just making sure.
Do we leave it open now where that's amenable or?
For the second sign, the one in the lower lucky corner, if we needed to, would you be okay with us moving it to somewhere else along 199th there if that location was not going to work?
Or is anything going to send away?
Well, just if there's a potential conflict or something.
Oh, okay. There may be a conflict if Six S Sports Bar Pickleball, if they decide that they need a little more space for their access control, there might be a conflict there with the sign, but we're not sure yet because we're not 100% sure where their access is going to be.
Is there a timeframe on when that they want those signs to come out?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be sometime this year.
So if we need to relocate the sign, we would have to pay to relocate it?
Yeah, it'd be at our expense for relocating.
Could we just hold off on that sign and then install the second one?
I could always ask them. They could drop off the signs, you know, install this one, and this one would be in storage with us, and then we install the sign.
Just put them in Hunter's garage. Yeah, we'd store them in my garage.
They are proposing a drive down there to line up with Santa Fe.
I hear there was some issues though with the telethon that was buried.
That's true. They're trying to work through those.
So broke, we can just hold on to the second one?
If you choose to, yes, we can.
What do you guys think? Is that fine?
Just move it closer to the end of the walkway.
Well, we'll put it there for now for the application, but if we do need to put it in another location along one night and night, would you be okay with us?
All right. We got a motion?
Motion to, for the mayor. Mayor to sign the MOU.
Motion by Brent?
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
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 Very good. This is item H.3. This is a resolution authorizing the final sale, GO, temporary note series 2023-3. So on March 20th, 2023, the governing body approved a petition received from the developer for the improvements of Phase 3 of the Arbor Creek development. During that meeting, the approved improvements of resolutions 23-16, 23-17, 23-18, 23-19, 20, and 23-2021. Resolution to approve the improvements through temporary notes, which will later be converted to permanent financing through special assessments, which is step one of the process. On April 3rd, 2023, the governing body approved resolution authorizing the financial advisor bond council to offer sale of notes with estimated amount of 1.4 million, which is step two. Today, being April 17, 2023, Stiefel Nicholas and Co. opened the bids for the notes and checked them for accuracy. They will be present for the results of the sale and recommend that the city accept the bid for the purchase of provided lowest true interest cost, TIC, which is step three. I'm going to hand this over now. There's somebody behind me.
I'll take it.
All right.
I'll take it.
Financial advisor bids. Let's see if we see.
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brett Shover and Stiefel Nicholas and Company, financial advisors for the city. As Micah mentioned, we developed a preliminary official statement in the last two weeks with health familiar staff. We submitted it to a list of potential bidders, potential underwriters and banks, and on, or at 10 o'clock this morning, is the bids in here? No. No? Okay. We received three bids for the notes this morning, and the third best bid was from Country Club Bank at a true interest cost of 3.7672%. The cover bid was from Oppenheimer and Company Incorporated at 3.738%, and the best bid was provided by Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, Minnesota, at a true interest cost of 3.636806%. at a true interest cost of 3.636806% on the almost four-year temporary notes. They bid a little bit of premium and we were able to capture about 1% of that premium to go as a contingency towards the project. That was staff's recommendation as construction costs are, you know, a little unpredictable right now. But we were able to capture that premium and reduce the size of the issue. Instead of 1,455, we're only issuing 1,435,000 in temporary notes. And that'll be due on December 1st of 2026. The goal is to get the projects completed and then we'll spread the specials to the property owners. Before this is due, we'll issue general obligation bonds, 20-year bonds, pay off the notes with those bonds, and then specially assess them to the property owners. And that's the plan. You've done it. The city's done it many times with other developments in the city. And that's how these special assessment projects typically go together. Okay. We did that. Okay, this issuance complies with the adopted resolutions of 23-22 as detailed above. Cost of improvements will be financed through KSA 12-6A01 at SEC, the special assessment statute. Proposed documents, which is the resolution prepared by Gilmore and Bell, your bond counsel, have been reviewed by bond counsel and by your financial advisor and your city attorney, Ryan Beck, and they were all approved as to form. It's recommended that you, A, first step one is to accept the best bid of the temporary notes by Northland Securities at a true interest cost of 3.637% with a voice vote. And then step two is approving the resolution, accepting the sale of the temporary notes to the bidder with the lowest true interest cost as recommended by your financial advisor, also a voice vote. Once accepted and the resolution's approved, we'll submit the transcript to the attorney general's office, order the notes printed, set up the process for the closing of the notes that is going to happen on May 3rd. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the sale or legal questions to be handled by Kevin.
Questions?
None? Are you in motion?
Make a motion for the temporary notes for the lowest interest. Who was it?
Northland Securities.
Northland Securities.
Motion by Brent. Second. Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Motion to approve the resolution, the note resolution.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion to approve the resolution accepting the sale of temporary notes to bear the lowest true interest cost as recommended by the financial advisor. Motion by Aubrey.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This is item H.4. This is the industrial revenue bond or IRV policy discussion. So quick background, as the city grows, more businesses begin the process of relocating or having their start in the city limits of Goddard. As businesses begin this transition, questions arise about economic incentives. These economic incentives can come in several different forms, and most notably, the question circles around tax abatements. Tax abatement means when a city either reduces or forgives the ad valorem taxes on a property for a certain length of time. Historically, Goddard has used industrial revenue bonds, IRVs, as an economic tool to assist businesses with ad valorem tax abatements. An IRV can serve repurposes first if certain requirements are met. An IRV can provide tax exempt interest financing for project costs. Most private projects do not meet the requirements for tax exempt interest. And the projects that do meet the requirements are usually for a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and small manufacturing purposes. Second, IRVs allow the recipient of the IRV to buy materials without having to pay sales taxes on those materials. Finally, an IRV allows a developer structure with the governing body payment in lieu of taxes, a PIOT program to reduce or completely forego the taxes for the property for a maximum of 10 years. Different cities have different policies, but typically these policies look to address certain questions to help the governing body make a determination if an IRV is right for any particular project. So at this point, I am going to hand it back over to, I think Kevin this time. So Kevin Callen, Gilmore and Bell, he's going to run through the analysis. There's a lot of complicated vernacular and terminology here and different ideas, and so he's going to be available for questions.
Good evening. This, I think, is kind of an IRV 101 discussion. The city has issued industrial revenue bonds before, but sort of in one-off circumstances, Dove Estates has a couple of projects. So through the years, these have been considered and granted, but this would be more with a view towards having a policy that the governing body and staff can rely on in the future. So we can work through this, I suppose, generally. Certainly, you don't want a policy that would give one business unfair advantage over and up. And a policy would, I think, go a long way toward that instead of considering then one at a time, then maybe you approve one and the next one's not approved. And there would probably be very good reasons for that. But sometimes that's difficult to communicate and it's much easier to have it in your policy and say, this is how we do things. So we follow the policy. Micah mentioned the IRVs can have a maximum of 10 years for ad valorem tax abatement and are sometimes staggered. And we've seen that here in the city. I think Dove Estates has, maybe on the two different projects, different staggers. I think one was maybe 100% abatement in the first year and then kind of 80, 60. Yes. And I want to say maybe the second one was 100% for five years and then started stepping down. And that's, again, certainly at the discretion of the governing body and it can be included in the policy, the sorts of things you want to incentivize or maybe more greatly incentivize are going to have maybe a more generous abatement possibility. Maybe there are certain sort types of projects that you would want to have 10 years, 100% abatement on, and maybe others, it would be something less than that. To the extent it's less than that, and you've heard discussions of payments in lieu of taxes probably at different times, that's how that is handled. You would grant an abatement, but if you want something less than a full abatement, meaning you want some taxes to be paid, then you negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes and it would provide for a payment in lieu of the taxes that would otherwise be paid. By statute, that payment in lieu of taxes payment has to be treated just like any other tax payment. And I think the thought behind that is before any of us get any great ideas about, well, we'll just negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes and it will just be our taxes. We'll keep all of the taxes at the city level. Statute hardly can't do that. It has to be shared across all the taxing subdivisions as taxes paid would be. Application fee is pretty typical and then maybe an annual fee during the duration of tax abatement period. Cost benefit analysis is required by statute. That hasn't always been the case, but, and again, we dealt with this just last year on some of the Genesis projects where we had IRVs. You have to have a public hearing and have a cost benefit analysis before you grant the property tax abatement. Cost benefit analysis doesn't have to show anything in particular, but it's, it's a resource so that you can see, this looks fantastic or maybe it's a little marginal. But I'll add, even if something was marginal, that doesn't mean you can't grant the property tax abatement if it's something important and something you want to incentivize. So that's why I say it doesn't have a lot of teeth. You just have to have the analysis run. Yeah, typically, the policy would recognize that not all businesses should be given an abatement or a sales tax exemption and which would qualify. Sales tax exemption, and Micah touched on this a little bit. So three different incentives you control with IRVs. One could be tax exempt interest, like you get on your governmental purpose bonds. Those are tougher to get these days. It's usually manufacturing facilities. Nonprofit entities can benefit from tax exempt interest, which is going to lower the borrowing cost. And that's a federal incentive. The other two are state law incentives, property tax abatement, the sales tax exemption on construction costs. That can be significant depending on how the project is presented, what would be exempt, even if you didn't grant a sales tax exemption and you kind of get into labor, materials, what's exempt, what's not exempt. But on a large enough project, if you're exempting, you know, seven and a half, eight and a half percent, that, that turns it to a pretty large number sometimes. That doesn't require a cost benefit analysis or public hearing or anything like that. The sales tax exemption is completely your decision. And again, with the property tax abatement, it's impacting the ad valorem taxes of other taxing subdivisions. You give them notice of the hearing we've been referencing. So again, none of that applicable on the sales tax. Before we move, move to that, I know Micah included a number of things in the packet including a sample policy from the city of Bel Air, which I mentioned to Micah, I'm glad he included that because that's a pretty good comparison. Similar cities, suburban cities, you know, city of Wichita has a much more detailed policy. What qualifies, doesn't qualify. And again, you may want to consider different things. Maybe you're not competing with the city of Wichita, or maybe you are, and you want to have a little more flexibility and be able to take advantage of that. So the Bel Air policy, I think, is a good example of that. He also included kind of a general memo that we use in our firm that kind of describes a number of the things we've been talking about. And it touches on certain projects not being eligible for the property tax abatement. And it's just the legislature making determinations through the years that we don't want to incentivize these sorts of projects. And there are sort of corporate hog farms and those sorts of things listed. And then a broad description of any retail businesses. And it's referenced by NAICS code sections 44 and 45. That's mostly retail, doesn't cover all retail. And I mentioned to Micah, an example is it doesn't cover restaurants. So even though they're collecting retail sales tax, so that's one of those, we would just have to sort of consider case by case. If something's collecting retail sales tax, it doesn't mean, I guess, depending on the facts, it doesn't qualify for an ad valorem tax abatement. We just have to dig into the NAICS code.
How would you, so I guess if any restaurant, how would you determine if one restaurant qualifies or if another restaurant doesn't?
Well, I, we really just initially ask the business, the company, what's your NAICS code? What do you operate under? Again, most restaurants are not. Some different, some businesses have different operations and maybe part of it's a retail operation that would qualify and maybe another part of it is something that would qualify. Even those things are permissible. You have to make sort of an allocation of what portion of the project is bond financed and would qualify. There was a time when restaurants were prohibited in the way they defined the NAICS code. And just to give you an example, hotel projects that maybe had a restaurant, the hotel would qualify, the restaurant wouldn't. And so we would ask the company and maybe their architects and engineers to make a square footage allocation. What's the restaurant? What's the restaurant cost? That's not going to be eligible for an ad valorem tax abatement. And the county and the board of tax deals can deal with that sort of detail. So to answer your question, it's, we really just have to dig in. Sometimes it's going to be obvious and sometimes it's not. One other thing I wanted to mention, the ad valorem tax abatement is across all taxing subdivisions. The one exception, and this came out of some of the school finance legislation a few years ago where they were trying to get that right. The capital outlay levy of school districts is protected. That is not something you can abate. That's, and I don't know why the legislature chose that levy as opposed to some different school district levies they could have chosen, but that will not exceed 8 mils. So if the school district has capital outlay levy, and I believe they do, and it may be close to 8, that's never part of this discussion. We can't abate it even if we wanted to, even if the school district wanted to, by statute that can't be abated. So even if you're talking about 100% property tax abatement, it really isn't. They're going to have to pay the school district capital outlay levy if nothing else. So I'll stop there and see if you have any other questions. We probably could talk about this for hours.
What does the city of Bel Air do for industrial and IRV? Does it do anything?
On?
Industrial, does it do anything like that?
For industrial prospects?
Yeah. Right. Does it have any style of IRV or?
No, not any different than others. My general impression, and you could look at your newspaper articles, they've been, I don't know if aggressive is the right phrase, but they'll consider it for virtually any business. And they have a fairly large commerce park and they definitely wanted to incentivize it and get it filled as much as they could. And so I think they generally consider that. There are certain areas that whether you're industrial or commercial, no matter what you're doing, we want this area to develop and we may view it more favorably. And then, and by the way, things may change over time.
Right.
If you adopt a policy and you have a lot of development, at some point, you may decide or future governing body may decide. We don't need to incentivize it in the same way we did before. So if we may have considered this project for a 10-year, 100% abatement then, we may want to revisit that and alter our policy so it's something less than that. So you have a lot of flexibility, but it's a pretty powerful tool.
No, we have done, asked for Dove number two. Was it the five years? I know Dove's number one with 10 years, you know, stair step.
It's, I wish I would have looked. So the memory care was sort of Dove number two. I think that is the one where it was, if it's not five years at 100, it's a period of time where it's just abated completely for a period of time. And then the reduction is maybe a little more aggressive over a shorter period of time. So it's, it was a way to sort of get to the same place, and I'll have the numbers wrong. But if the, if Dove State's original project was 100, then reduced to 90, then reduced to 80, you know, all the way down to 10%, it was sort of, well, what if we do 100% for five years and then we have bigger reductions in the last five years? So if you looked at it over 10 years, maybe the result is the same, but they have the benefit of the greater abatement in their startup years, I think was the thinking behind that.
Any questions? Now, adopting a formal policy doesn't find any future council hands with anything?
No. Frankly, I sometimes think that the value of the policy is it gives you a roadmap and something to rely on, particularly if you want to say no. If you want to say yes, because it's that important, you can always waive the policy, but it's, it just compared to, you know, individual consideration each time you get into discussions of why this one and not that one, having the policy allows you to answer those sorts of questions more directly. And maybe the reason this one is the policy and the reason that one isn't, again, because the policy.
This is adopting it and then completely amendable at any time, right?
Yeah. Amendable, waivable in part and all.
You're basically just establishing a default.
The, one thing I'll mention, and it's not covered in any of the materials, two ways you can grant a property tax abatement. One is through IRVs. The other one is through a constitutional process. And a constitutional process is much more restrictive and it's, it's for businesses that are manufacturing articles of interstate commerce, corporate headquarters, and then storing articles of interstate commerce. And by law, if you're going to grant one of those, you have to have a policy. They did build it into the statute. So this would be a good step, whether, this is called the IRB policy, and then later we have a policy that's pretty similar, but it's for the constitutional abatement process. That's, that's usually.
So what guidelines were we using previously? Was there?
Yeah, just individual consideration.
Shoot from the hip.
Case by case.
Shoot from the hip.
Yeah.
So this kind of formalizes our process. We can hear from it if a particular project would come up that.
You want to maintain consistency.
Got any questions?
I mean, I like the idea of having a guideline for the future.
Yeah, it's always helpful.
For sure.
For sure.
I missed the first half of the discussion, so I'm just gonna abstain on this one, let you boys handle it.
No, I think the guideline is great. That's, I mean, then everybody knows that's what we do.
And it's kind of designed to help, say, stimulate, you know, it's.
As long as you have the liberty to make decisions on certain circumstances, right? So as long as it's not like a.
Yeah, I agree with you. Well, and the, the formal recommendation of action is just to authorize city staff to begin preparing this. And I think, and Mike has said correctly, I think the thought is, development is starting to accelerate, you're going to have more requests, not fewer. And, you know, we've done a handful of IRBs in the last five years, and probably will be more in the next five years.
Yeah, we've received multiple requests for information, and this will just help us with giving, giving information to those who are interested. And, you know, I'm, I guess the guidance we're asking for is, should we adopt, should we draft something similar to yours, Bel Air, for instance? Or if there's anything in there that you did not want, we can change. But, I mean, still we'll be bringing something to consider and you can make changes at that time as well, so.
Well, once you get it all put together, yeah, I would say go, and then if we want to add or adjust or tweak.
Yeah, we'll have our own, we'll probably have our own spin, and we'll be consulting our legal and court counts as well.
Yeah. Okay. Do I have a motion direct to that?
Let me get my.
Motion by Aubrey.
Second.
Second by Brent. All of you, either say aye.
Aye.
Sting?
Aye.
All right. Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is item eight point five. So this is related to taxable and non-taxable bond discussion. So as the city grows and more developments approach the city propose new developments within the city, these developments could be commercial, residential, single family, two family, multi-family. Since Goddard, like other municipalities around the area, offers the option for developers to finance improvements through the petition special assessment process, it is highly likely that a developer would take this route. Most of the new developments we're seeing, they're going to offer, they're going to come forward and they're going to want to do petitions for all improvements to be done through the temporary note bonding process, just like you saw earlier in item eight point three. Typically, these bonds are tax exempt, meaning that the buyer of the bonds does not pay federal income tax or interest income from the bonds. These are also exempt from state income tax as well in Kansas. Municipalities can issue tax exempt bonds or temporary notes that are designated as bank qualified. This allows banks to purchase the bonds or notes and deduct a significant portion of the interest earned on the bonds being purchased. This benefits municipalities issuing the debt because the banks typically purchase bank qualified bonds at a lower interest rate. In order to issue bank qualified bonds, the municipality has to reasonably expect and certify to issue no more than ten million in a tax exempt debt in the current calendar year. Excuse me, if the municipality expects to issue more than ten million in the calendar year, they can issue non-bank qualified bonds or notes. You cannot however issue both bank qualified and non-bank qualified tax exempt bonds or notes in the same calendar year. Any bonds or notes issued over this limit would, might be taxable bonds or notes. This part, once again, I'm going to hand it over to more qualified individuals. Who wants to take a stab at it?
I guess I can go.
All right, here you go.
I don't think I've seen the slides, so I'm going to have to read there too. Basically, we're, the staff is coming to you tonight for a little bit of guidance. As Mike had mentioned, when issuing tax exempt bonds or notes, tax exempt debt, there's what's called bank qualification. And prior to the Tax Reform Act of nineteen eighty-six, which was a while ago, banks or commercial institutions could purchase municipal bonds and carry, carry the bonds or notes and deduct the interest in carrying expense, just like a normal investor. After the Tax Reform Act of nineteen eighty-six, the IRS said that banks or commercial institutions could no longer do that. And it was basically to give an incentive, well, okay, I should go a little bit further. They said you can no longer do that, however, issuers can issue bank qualified debt. And those banks or commercial institutions can purchase those and do what they could have done before. However, they call it a small issuer exemption. That issuer, such as the city of Goddard, would have to certify that they would not issue more than ten million dollars that calendar year. They couldn't close an issue or issues more than ten million dollars in that calendar year. If so, then they can purchase the bonds and deduct the carrying cost or significant portion of the carrying cost. If not, if not, then they couldn't deduct that. Basically, most issuers can determine whether or not they're going to issue more than ten million dollars. And if they are going to issue more than ten million dollars in the calendar year, they can issue non-bank qualified tax exempt bonds. Okay? Hope you're following me here, just a little bit. If, and we might be in the situation today, which is why we're bringing this, not today, but we may be in the situation this calendar year, if the city of Goddard didn't anticipate that they were going to issue more than ten million dollars, they could, they could issue their notes or bonds bank qualified, which is what we've done. We've issued, this is the third series of temporary notes that we've sold and issued for the city of Goddard, and they've all been bank qualified, tax exempt bonds. Bank qualification historically has been worth about twenty-five basis points, about a quarter of a percent. Okay? So there's a, there's an incentive to the city and its taxpayers, and in this case, the specials payers, to issue tax exempt bank qualified debt. It's the cheapest, cheapest debt you can issue. And it's come to our attention, as, as Mica and as Matt brought up earlier, you're getting a lot of applications for developments, residential expansion. And as you know, as we did earlier tonight, part of the process is to issue temporary notes to finance those infrastructure improvements. As you can see, we're, the, the last one that we issued today is about twenty thousand dollars less, but we're writing about eight million dollars of tax exempt bank qualified bonds that the city's issued so far this calendar year. We're not even May yet. If there are other, and round members, if, if the city thinks it's going to issue more than two million dollars more in tax exempt debt this calendar year, it might have to be issued taxable, which means the purchaser or the investor cannot deduct the interest on their, on their balance sheet. They can't deduct the interest, they'd have to pay taxes on the interest. And therefore, they're not going to buy it at a tax exempt rate, the interest rate's going to be higher. Okay? If the interest rate's higher, especially on a residential development, residential development temporary notes, all of the costs of those developments are rolled into specials. And then typically, unless they pay them off in advance, they're going to pay specials tax to make the bond payments once the projects are done and the bonds are issued. If we're, if we're specially assessing the property owners using taxes or taxable interest, the costs of specials are going to be higher. Is it exorbitant? Probably not. Okay? What I was thinking, as Michael was talking today, if we're in the situation where we didn't think we're going to go over ten million dollars and now it looks like we're going to and we have to, and we have to get these projects going, and we have to issue taxable temporary notes to get the projects going, you can still pay those off with tax exempt bonds. It's not like it's taxable and it's going to be taxable from here on. So the bonds don't have to be taxable unless we fall into a situation like we're in today where we may not be able to. But I think the, the discussion for tonight, I think that Mica, and I'll let him kind of explain what he would like the council to consider as a direction, but I think we need kind of a direction on maybe some priority systems as far as if we fall into this scenario where we think we might have to issue taxable notes for projects. If there's residential projects, like we did earlier, and maybe the city has some at-large projects, which projects maybe get priority for the tax exempt finance? And I think that's kind of the direction he's looking for. You want to take over?
Yeah, I can, I can hand it over, Kevin. And Brent, you can jump back in, but.
Sure.
These two gentlemen up front, obviously, please direct a lot of questions to them while they're here. But did some of that make sense? Basically, this is just about rates, what kind of rates we get. Almost every development wants to do the petition process because for a couple of reasons. One, you don't have to pay out of pocket these size letters of credit, so it's, it's much more beneficial to the developer, and it's better for the homeowners because we get better interest rates than the developer would. So when we turn into specials, obviously then it's better for purchasing your own homes, et cetera. But as you can see, and as, I didn't mention the, Brett, but after we, Brett and I talked on Friday, literally after we hung up, we got petition for another project for three point five million. So hypothetically, in May, we would be exceeding eleven point five million. So we would obviously be over that ten million dollar mark. So the question is, with interest rates being what they are, certain of them being better quality interest rates than others, maybe the city should consider which developments get preferential treatment for certain types of rates versus other developments. For example, commercial developments might, we might want to consider giving them the taxable rate, and then maybe giving residential development that's going to be owner occupied a non-taxable rate since that's like one percent difference. And that's just something to be considered. But obviously, I don't, at this point, if we did, if we accept the petition in May and we'd be at eleven point five million, I don't know how we would issue and structure that debt. And so that's kind of the question for Kevin at that point, how we'd want to proceed. Typically, we would look, we would look into our crystal balls and say, what does the future hold? What's the next year look like? And that's kind of hard to say, but if it's very likely we're going to go over ten million, you would just simply say that we're going to go, we would just issue tax exempt, non-bank qualified notes for everybody. We'd just treat everybody equally across the board and just say, hey, these are not bank qualified, but they're also not taxable. So everybody's going to get the same general rate, whatever the rates hold. But at this point, I'm not sure if we can actually do that because we've already issued close to eight million, and we're probably going to issue another couple million here until we'll be over ten. And so I don't know at this point. Kevin, you want to jump in and talk about what is our, what is our process moving forward and how the council wants to handle that?
Before Kevin gets started, let's also keep in mind that we are planning to issue at least one point five million for road projects this year. We want to take it down.
I get, I mean, before I, you know, get sidetracked here and I remember my thought, I think ideally, it would be nice to save that two million for residential development. I mean, to stay almost consistent to what we're doing right now. I guess, let me throw a scenario at you. It's pretty easy to go over two million dollars in any residential development. So what happens with, you get to a certain point in a residential development and now it's got to be taxable? You go over that, the ten million dollar threshold, what do you do there?
Well, you do have some options, and let me throw another wrench in the works. Another thought might be, well, the one point five for streets is for the entire city, it benefits, it may, depending on, I know there's some discussion of some special assessments. But if it's a city at large project, there are some cities that would say, we want to protect that first because if we have a higher interest rate on that, it impacts everybody across the city that's paying taxes for that bond issued. So, and, and again, that's kind of a policy consideration. I mentioned to Mica last week, well, we see this come up sometimes and it's, it is amazingly contentious, is if you were one of the committees that had a small not-for-profit college, as a number of cities in the state do, they're, again, nonprofits, five one C threes, they can benefit from tax exempt bonds, they can benefit from bank qualified tax exempt bonds. If they do anything, we're just talking about IRBs. If, if you had, you know, ABC College here that could benefit from tax exempt bonds and they came and said, we have a five million dollar project, you say, that's fantastic, you issue a tax exempt bank qualified, and then you have a need at the city for seven million dollars, then you have this tension of, well, we, we just used five million, we're already passing on the colleges' project. And, and I say it's contentious because sometimes those colleges think they should be the priority. We should get the bank qualified designation, get the better interest rate, we're a big deal in the community. And so, again, those are just policy decisions you'll have to, to make.
Is it always only ten million? Does it go higher? It's just only ten million?
It was thirty.
In every city?
It was thirty million.
Yeah.
Per calendar year, per issuer. So the county, you could have some sort of overlap situation sometimes where the county could be the issuer, the city could be the issuer on some things. And you each have separate BQ amounts. And so sometimes we, we even play that game if it really gets acute, like if there was an IRB year, again, if you had a nonprofit or something. But it is ten million, it is the city's ten million for the calendar year. After the Great Recession, three years in nine, ten, and eleven, that was bumped up to thirty million. And I wish it was still thirty million, it would be a lot easier for a lot of discussions. And there has been talk at different times, I mean, sort of League of Cities and trade organizations are always pushing for that change again in Washington, but for the time being, it's ten. So in terms of, you know, what are your options? You can, particularly on the temporary notes and the residential projects, sometimes what we see, these are short-term financings anyway. So instead of doing a three-year temporary note, maybe you do a six-month or a one-year temporary note to get you into next year where you think you might not have the ten million dollar limit problem that you had in a preceding year. So you push it into the next year where you think you'll have some available ten million. And by doing that, you protect this year because those are taxable. You have a higher rate on those notes because they're taxable, but it's for a short period of time. Look, we did the best we could. We got you financed, it's taxable for a year, but we did your, your other two years tax exempt, it was the best we could do with the tax. So sometimes we see that, and say, well, we have to finance this, this thing moving forward. It has to be taxable because we've already done eight million tax exempt BQ, but we're going to limit it and we're going to make it very short term. Maybe you think you'll have temporary notes the next year anyway and you just sort of roll it all together so you're not doing a lot of additional deals. But the, the import of all of this, and I don't know that you could have done anything differently this year. I mean, some of these notes happen pretty quickly, some of them related to cost overruns for projects that were already in the pipeline. But it's, it's definitely a worthwhile discussion to think about priorities. And then early each year, think about, what, what do we think the year is going to look like? Do we, if we think it might exceed ten million, then as Mike said, maybe we just start and say, we're not doing anything bank qualified. Everything's going to be tax exempt, which is still a good rate, but it's not going to be bank qualified, so it might not be quite as good as we otherwise would have done.
So with that scenario of delay projects, like if you want over the ten million?
If.
And we would have, for developer or?
Only, I, maybe. If the developer said, well, if you're going to do taxable notes and my interest rate's higher, I, that changes my numbers, I'm not ready to proceed. And that's why it sort of gets back to, well, what if we limited it in time? Maybe it's, you know, we're coming up on May, June now. So if something was happening in the middle of the summer, maybe you say, look, maybe we can get this done as a six-month temporary note and get it in the next year. So you have taxable interest for six months or whatever it is, that's kind of the best you could offer. So that's how we can minimize this and try to get you in. So that's how we can minimize this and try to get you into where the 10 million calculation's going to be better. The other thing I wanted to mention, if you look back last year and just total up the principal amount of everything you issued, it would exceed 10 million. But once you designate something bank-qualified, like a temporary note, if you later refinance it into the permanent financing, you know, three years forward, you don't have to count that again in that three years forward year. So part of what we did last year was bonds, permanently financing notes. And because the notes were bank-qualified three years before, and we were just refinancing those, we're not doing any of the same project and all of that, you don't have to double count. So I wanted to make that clear because you could look in future, you, we could talk down and say, well, geez, we're at 8 million already in three years when all these notes are coming due. If we have anything else that's going on, we'll clearly be in excess of 10 million. But what we've done this year, if we do it right, will only count towards your 10 million BQ in 2023. So in 2026, if we have some new projects and we have 8 million in permanent bonds, we can say 8 million permanent. But they, in the tax code, it's called deemed designated. They're deemed designated in that year, but they don't count towards your 10 million. So they can still be bank-qualified, but they don't count towards that year.
So I guess the general question that staff is meeting, right, Matt, is pretty much this bond road project that y'all are working on.
I guess reserve that for?
Would you like to reserve that for the non-taxable bonds? Or do we want to stick that with residential up until it's dried up, right? I mean, is that the question?
Micah, what do you anticipate the faucet next issue is going to be?
The next one that we just got on Friday?
Yeah.
3.5 million.
So that one's going to blow anything?
Right. Well, and I guess, and to go back to your statement, city at large gets the, that's bang for its buck. We would use it for road project bonds.
Theoretically. And then under the facts that we're talking about tonight, one, you could bifurcate the 3.5 million residential and say, we're going to do as much of this tax exempt BQ for you as we can, but it's going to be, you know, nine, it's going to take us to 9 million, 900 some thousand. Or you could also say, look, we, we know the city at large street projects we're talking about would leave us under the 10 million, and maybe we just plan to do that, and anything else would have to be, you know, what's plan B? Maybe it's the short-term taxable temporary note and convert it to tax exempt as soon as we can.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all, I'm all for growth in the future, but also I think we got to focus on the Goddard that we have now and fixing some stuff. So I think we need to save it for that.
Yeah, I think infrastructure's first.
Yeah. We got to fix what we have and take care of what we have before we bring more people here.
I don't know, Micah, what's your take? Is that going to slow down residential? I, I don't see it. Maybe Phil might have a good idea, using something like that would slow residential development down? No? You don't know?
I, I mean, Phil's a good, I mean, he's a good person to lean on. For now, just look at the numbers. I can't speak specifically on, I think some developers do mention they're trying to keep their specials at a certain amount per month. I hear that a lot.
Right.
It's very possible that if we told them we were going to blow their, their magic number, you know, whatever that magic monthly number is, that they might be upset.
Right.
But.
But it's a magic monthly number. I mean, if, we're just being realistic. It's a magic monthly number that they try to stay around, and then they go build a lavish community center and run development. So really, I don't think it's going to slow things down at all, to be honest with you. And I think if the city gets most bang for its buck.
These come in throughout the year, right?
Huh?
These bonds come in throughout the year.
Yeah, as a residential development builds out, you know, you got to bond it out, put it on specials and everything. So I think if we, if you guys want to focus on fixing infrastructure in the city during these road projects that we're wanting to do, the most bang for the bite for that at-large taxpayer would be to do that, I think, is right.
Yeah. One other.
Go ahead. No, it's Matt.
Matt?
I'll take camera. So next year, when you calendar year, we reset this number, would you, should we be going with non-bank qualified tax exempt? Or should we be going, or should we use up that 10 million? I guess it's going to depend on pace of the new development.
Yeah, I, I mean, to be honest, at some point, if you're doing as much as you did last year and as much as you're doing this year, you'll reach a point where just because of your state law debt limit, you're going to have some restrictions anyway.
Right.
I'd be shocked excluding refinancings where you're going from temporary notes to permanent bonds or a true refinancing, but there just aren't that many years in a row you could just continue to do 10 million. And so I, I don't know that I would do anything differently than you've done this year other than be acutely aware it's maybe an issue. The one thing I was going to mention, and it may be a possibility, and you might find this humorous, we could do something that's called a Cinderella bond, a Cinderella note that starts taxable and then automatically converts to tax exempt next year. And I'm throwing this at Brett. That's like a placement, those don't get publicly offered the way these were, where you have somebody bid on them. It's probably just one commercial bank that sort of understands, okay, when I file my taxes, I'll have six months of taxable interest, and then there's this conversion if all the circumstances work. You get into next year, you're not going to exceed 10 million. So I indicate that just because it's sort of funny that we call them Cinderella notes or bonds because they magically convert in the future. But to indicate, there are some options. I mean, if we are talking about the temporary notes for 3.5 million in a couple of months, and we're talking about them being taxable, a couple of different ways that can be structured to maybe minimize that.
So if we learned anything tonight, the word conversion means Cinderella.
Well, that's, that's the one that I'm thinking, that's the one thing you'll remember tonight, Cinderella.
Their scenario, when these bonds are paid off and then it's a fiscal year, I mean, like a temporary bond, like a six-month one? I mean. Well, it wouldn't get paid off, it would just convert.
Yeah.
Right?
Or, again, it could be, if you're doing temporary notes next year, you'd say, let's do the new projects plus we're going to, we call it renew, we'll renew those taxable notes. And it's the only reason these are taxable, and Brett touched on this, is because of this $10 million limit. Other reasons things are taxable, because they're no longer governmental purpose, the private purpose, that's not applicable here. This is just a timing calendar year thing. We just have to get into the next calendar year, and you may have the flexibility to make that conversion. And yeah, it may be six months, it may be, just depending on when the 3.5 million that we're talking about or the next project would need to be issued.
So you could have multiple bonds and place Cinderella, I mean, could that flip in and out? Lack of better words?
I mean, we hope just once. If they go, in the situation we're talking about, if it converts to tax exempt, it's because you all are certifying, I'm certifying as bond counsel, all the conditions that are necessary for these to be tax exempt in this year, and maybe even bank-qualified in this year exist. And so then we're probably stuck, we really have just pushed it into next year, and with the hope, and probably a pretty good belief that next year will be better, we're probably not going to be bumping up against the 10 million so quickly, at least not with new projects. We may have some refinancing.
Right. Kevin, does this affect sales tax on our, because we don't pay sales tax on the materials used on our projects. Does the 10 million affect that?
It does not.
Okay.
I'd add one thing. As far as the Cinderella bond circumstance that Kevin referred to, those, those don't get done very often. They're kind of a special use. They were really popular a couple of years ago during COVID, just to get some refundings done. They don't happen very often. There's a lot of structuring that has to be done. As Kevin said, they, they don't get publicly sold like we did today. They get usually placed with a sophisticated bank or commercial institution. And it usually takes some time to educate people and investors on what the process is. The market has some, something to do with that, too. I mean, they may not, if they see interest rates go in a certain way, they may not want to buy something that converts to a tax exempt rate later. And another factor is, probably couldn't have gotten it done in two weeks like we did this, this last issue. So time is of the essence, that's probably not the best option. But I just wanted to point that out. If you want to do Cinderella bonds from here on out, it's not that easy. Not that easy to do.
Yeah, and I would add, probably not advisable if you thought, well, we're going to issue some temporary notes next year anyway. If anything, it might save you on some deal costs. If you got it all done this year, it's a three-year note, it's taxable for six months, it converts, but that's it. That's a one-time issue versus, well, we know we have some temporary notes, we'll do next year, and we'll be doing a deal anyway if we can make that conversion at that time.
So I guess, do we have a consensus? We want to save the non-taxable bonds for getting infrastructure projects that we're wanting to do? Is that a good consensus? Can I have a roll call vote just to lock everybody down?
Are we voting to save it for infrastructure?
Yeah.
To clarify.
Yeah. Vote motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Keaton. A second. Second by Aubrey. Roll call.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Traylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Senator Lee.
Oh. She snuck in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you guys have any follow-up questions, I know that was a lot, feel free to email us, and we'll direct any questions towards bond counsel, our financial advisor, and hopefully elucidate on that a little bit more. I know, probably didn't expect so much financial chicanery involved in residential development, but there you go. This is item H.6, this is the engineering service agreement, MKEC, Arbor Creek Phase 3. MKEC Engineering submitted an engineering service agreement, ESA, for engineering services for improvements on Arbor Creek Phase 3. On April 3, 2023, it is noted during the regular city council meeting that the ESA has certain language in the agreement that was potentially in conflict with reasonable applications in the city. Governing body directed staff to review and make such recommendations for many of the ESA to MKEC and bring the revised ESA back to the next regular city council meeting. MKEC needs such revisions as provided by the city attorney and revise ESA as attached to the H.6A. So governing bodies are reviewing the engineering service agreement between city and MKEC, engineer for engineering services for Arbor Creek Phase 3. The ESA will cover Phase 3 of Arbor Creek, then many ESA will have liability coverage up to 1 million. But actually, this recently got changed, they struck it. So the paragraph that was mentioned, a liability cap was removed per the city attorney's recommendation, and MKEC was in favor of that, so they removed that paragraph that limited, had that liability cap on it. Financially and unlawfully, it's proved out of form, it is recommended that the city council approve revised engineering service agreement between MKEC and City Goddard for engineering services for Arbor Creek Phase 3.
Remember this was the thing in the last meeting, maybe?
The Arlenco?
Yeah. Yeah, and MKEC came back, you know, trying to find some middle ground, and they had suggested, well, hey, can we cap liability at whatever our insurance policy limits were? I said, no. I mean, I just don't see any reason at this juncture for us to be agreeing to cap on liability. Go ahead. Okay. You got any questions? Pretty straightforward. So I got a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised engineering service agreement.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Very good. This is item H.7. Just.
Yep.
Do I read this?
No.
No?
So this is item H.7, this is a posha discussion between Goddard Galleria, for the Goddard Galleria Public Road Improvement, Sewer Main Extension. Quick background, the Goddard Galleria is located west of 183rd Street, north of the Prairie Sunset Trail, south of US 54, and east of Crown Drive. This area of development is located inside the Greater Star Bond District, such that any developments that occur within the development help pay off the city's bond obligations with sales taxes and property taxes. More commercial lots are selling inside the Goddard Galleria, and as such additional roads are required to open up new lots for sale and development, some of the roads in the Goddard Galleria are public roads and other roads are private. Developer is paying out of pocket for the private roads. Developer is paying 350,000 out of pocket for the improvements of the private drive. For the public roads, which are dedicated to the city, he would like to ask the city council to consider putting in two new public roads with 50% of cost being allocated to specials and tax assessments and 50% being paid at large, with that being assessed for that 50%. Governing bodies discussing the possibility of 50/50 split cost share for the improvement of Sixth Street and a portion of Seasons Road inside the Goddard Galleria, Star Bond and the extension of Sewer Main, approximately 200 feet south. Private drive is being paid out of pocket. Cost of improvement for the public roads is 547,000, which includes 55,000 for an extension of the sanitary sewer, 200 feet south, avoid paying higher costs for boring. 273,500 would generally, plus or minus, would be specially assessed against the commercial lots. 273,500 paid at large by the city. So this purple area, this is the Star Bond District, so anything, any revenue we generate out of here goes towards paying off our bonds for the Star Bond. This yellow area over here, this is the Goddard Galleria District. This blue is the private drive, being paid out of pocket by the developer. This green is the one that's under discussion. This is the public road improvement. The cost of improvement will have to be considered as part of the temporary note process. Legal consideration, if the city council agrees to the proposal, city bond counsel, Kevin Cowan, city financial advisor, brush over and draft a petition to sign by developer, and the cost of improvements will have to be considered as part of the temporary note process. It is recommended the city council either, one, deny the request for the cost share, two, approve the request for the cost share, direct staff to formalize necessary documents, or three, table requests for the cost share. If there are any questions? Yes.
I got lots. Go back to the picture, please.
Yes.
Of all those purple lines, the well, at least the ones that are existing currently, where the roads are, who paid for those? So like, the Frontage Road?
The Frontage Road?
Yes. We paid for that, correct?
I'm not sure how the Frontage Road came about.
Yes.
Did we pay for that?
The Crown Drive that goes in?
It was, the Frontage Road was, was that a split between the city?
I think that's a cost share.
K dot?
Yeah.
So Frontage was K dot and?
And C.
The Crown Drive that goes into Genesis, so that backwards L there, the one down, and all the way into Genesis, who paid for that?
Cities paid for that with a, we, general obligation debt that weren't currently paying for.
The yellow road that is existing up to the blue line?
Yes.
In front of Walmart, who paid for that?
It's a private drive, but I don't know who, I think it was, do we know who paid for that?
Developer.
Developer, yeah. So I believe that, and that runs from here, clear up to here.
That's all we got.
And the only portion that, that they're wanting us to cost share is just the green?
There would be the San Haris Sewer, about 200 feet south as well, but this would be, this is the green portion, that'd be the cost share portion for the street improvement. The blue portion's out of pocket, private.
And normally on the sanitary sewer, how does that, is that normally fully assessed to the business and/or home, or is that something?
Typically, it's got through the petition process, you know, special assessor.
Are those lots?
Not always the case, of course, you know, we oversize.
We oversize, yeah.
We'll oversize occasionally.
Are those lots already sold, allocated to businesses? I mean, are they already leased, or are they going to be developed? Are they already?
Do you want to stop about that at all?
What was the question again?
The, the yellow lots up there along that Frontage Road, are those, are those already sold, or are they already leased, or?
Well, you know where the Bronx is. And then we got Starbucks right there. And then I do have under contract, one other lot next to the drive, the other side of it. Now that I do have under contract. it, now that I do have under contract to sell. And there is an acre in between there that is still for sale. And then the others are, I don't have anything.
And then that, the big purple, we're going through all of that, is that in plans? Is that just an idea?
This is platted.
Okay.
So when they go through, when there's raw land, and you go through the engineering process, it's called plating. And plating just means a division of divisions. You're taking land, it's been divided, and you're cutting it up into smaller pieces. And so during the plating process, there's dedications, and so they'll dedicate roads that are in reserves as private, and then roads that are being dedicated to the city as public roads. And so this is platted a while back, and this area over here has been dedicated to the public, and this green portion here was dedicated to the public, and then this portion over here is all private reserve. So as this develops more and more, this, the question of paving this will come up in the future.
That's what I was asking.
Just one question I got against, could this be disordered to the existing bond? If so, does that take away from the infrastructure we just discussed?
It's going to put us right to the limit of, I mean, you're adding, you know, we were talking about potentially one and a half million, assuming all of those projects get funded. This would, this would push us right up to it, so I can't say.
Including this, or without?
This will push it right up to the limit that we have left over. But again, that's depending on. It's going to depend on all the projects that we have currently, you know, estimated to be one and a half million is what we're capping at, assuming all of those, those, all those projects end up happening, which we're not sure on all three of them yet, so.
I'd like to propose a table, have further discussions, understanding what the cost analysis looks like pertaining to the rest of obligations we want to pursue.
I second that.
Oh, um, I have a motion by, sorry, I'm new to this. I have a motion by Aubrey and a second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion is tabled.
Items are tabled. Thank you very much. One item, I, governing body comments?
Should we tell Larkin that he can come back?
He can come back, yes. All right, you want to grab?
All right. Well, thank you guys for coming. I know this room is kind of a long, lots of talking, so, but thanks for sticking it out. As far as Main Street Market, quick update, we're up to 24 vendors. When I first brought that idea to Angie and said, you know, I want to try to get some foot traffic to Main Street, honestly, I thought like, if we can get like 10 to 15 vendors, that'd be sick. So the fact that we're up to 24 is awesome, but we still have a month and a half before we actually start, so I expect that to grow, and that's not counting the businesses that will be there. So I'm super excited for what that's going to do. Wanted to just point out, we have, I don't know if they're technically new owners, I guess you would know, Four Feathers, not Four Feathers, sorry, Wall of Denim, I wrote Four Feathers down, should have remembered. Wall of Denim, and it looks like it's a mother and daughter duo, is that correct? I just think that's awesome. I just, I'm so excited for that. So if they happen to see this, we're rooting for you, I'm looking forward to getting in there and talking to them. Jeffrey, thank you for bringing that 199 to our attention. I live off of 199th Street, and I see it. Not, I don't see a ton of kids walking through there, but I believe that it's happening. And my family?
I'll give them a sidewalk, so let them walk safely.
Yeah, well, my family, when we go on our walks, we always have to delve back and come through the neighborhoods, and, so I'll definitely look into that. Jotted down a couple things. Also, Splashpad is open, if you guys didn't see that, my daughter was there today. She learned how to walk the last couple of weeks, so watching her walk and then get sprayed with water was fantastic. And I noticed that they've started cleaning the pool. So very exciting season for our community and all that is to come this summer, so I'm looking forward to it, and can't wait to see you guys out there. Thanks.
Sarah?
Um, thanks for allowing me to show up late. Sorry Henley had a track meet. We had to go watch her. So rushed here from there. The pool has signups, have signups started for lessons, or they just posted the new lesson times and?
Posted it.
Posted it.
And the dates.
Okay, the dates and times are online. I think that's all I have. Thanks to the Public Works for getting the Splashpad operational and open again, and it does have the new anti-slip coating, so hopefully that will prevent some slips. Those crazy kids.
All right. Aubrey?
I'm glad, Jeff, thank you for bringing up the sidewalk thing, that's a, that's a good thing. Thank you guys for confusing me with your math quizzes tonight. Fair enough, but that's about all I got.
Oh, I, nope, I don't have any.
Well, I'm the one who's got several things. Community Center Discussion on the 24th. There was a post that was made. Community Center Improvements Public Discussion, April 24th, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, Goddard City Hall. That is to discuss what, we roughly have a budget that we know what we want to spend. About 150 was for the library and the community center. So that discussion's going to be to bring in people, talk with city staff on what are some of the priorities. Now, we have to make sure that, we have to be, in reality, we can't, you know, recreate the Taj Mahal over here, we do have walls that we have to stay within. I know that the foundation of the community center needs some improvements, it has to have little jacks, am I correct?
Correct.
And that's roughly about 55,000.
No, we've got, it's about 25,000, we got a way better for it.
You got a better, okay. Well, all right, well, that's good. Hey, we're making progress! But that topic's going to be, what can we do, what can we do this year, and then how do we respond to it? Maybe we can't get everything done, but how do we prioritize that and hear from the community? And so hopefully, people show up and we all have a good conversation. I do want as many members of the governing bodies to be there, if you guys can make it, so you can hear yourself from the community. And I'll be reaching out to some of the community members as well to help get some more involvement to come to that date. Community Goddard, Brooke, can you give me an update on that?
Cool. We chose a location that is accessible from the street, so people can drive in if they're not able to walk. There is water there and electricity. I spoke with Mr. Funky earlier, and hopefully, you and I'll get together later this week, and I'm going to take him by and see what he thinks of it.
Okay, all right. When you guys, before you go out, give me a call, so I'll go out with you guys and take a look at it, so. Microphone, where are we at on ordering microphones?
Um, they have, the equipment has been coming in, and they're going to install this Friday.
This Friday, okay. Very good. We went through the bond projects. How are we doing on, you pretty much needed to know kind of guidance tonight, to know how to handle the street improvements, right? So where are you at on the old roads?
We tabled that discussion, so we're, what I'm going to propose is that we, we're waiting on hearing from those residents as well, so I think we should go ahead and begin the preliminary issuance to include that, whether we end up doing it or not, and we can just not use those funds or use them for another street project.
Okay.
That's what we're, that's kind of been the tentative plan anyway, and until I, and you know, I told, we have not heard, at least as far as I know, we've not been back from those individuals.
We have, I talked to a couple of Hawkins Lane individuals, but, I don't know, they're still undecided. Okay. Well, we need to somehow get moving on that. I don't know which, what's it going to be, but can't wait forever, so.
Yeah, I mean, do we set a deadline, and like?
Whatever you guys want. Okay, well, let's work on that this week, and then next week, we'll have a better direction on what to go. Bank discussion, Matt, I know you've been somewhat working on that.
It's in the works, it's going to take time, but we're working on it right now. I met with, our contact at the bank is not there, does not work there anymore.
Yeah.
I'm going, I'll be meeting the new work people this week, I've had another person who works here, so. It's in the works, we're moving forward.
Okay. I did call the Kansas League of Municipalities today. I also talked to Terry and Ryan about that. I had left a message with, her name's Nikki, and the Kansas League provides a service for administrative hunts and also other city staff. So I reached out to them, they're working on it. I know that we've had some people interested in RFP. I think two have expressed an intention to submit a proposal. Those proposals are due a week from today. So we should be in a position to present something to you at the first meeting of May. Okay. So we are working on that, that's not like it's on the back burner. We're making progress, but we want to make sure we're doing it right. I want to do is a gold mine before the end of the year. I'd like to see a welcome to Goddard sign made up off of, I know Mike had reached out to KDOT today, he's got an email, but the south side of Kellogg on 183rd, Kellogg, that, we had that right away, he's going to see what it would take to get a nice welcome to Goddard sign as he comes in, so. I know we have to get different quotes and see what it costs, where it would come from, but that's something I'd like to see if we can get done this year. Harland, have we done any thought on finding that, finding water discussion that we, I know that was something that we discussed a while back?
We, we've talked to the groundwater hydrologist, and then we went up and met with the Equus beds, Brooke and I, and we went up and talked to them. They identified a party that we might start some discussions with, and we made, we found a person to talk to there, and they're, it's a, it's a, it's a utility, it's an entity, and they are still considering whether they might be willing to, they have made a decision whether they're going to allow some of their water rights to be purchased. But that, I think that's our most, or maybe our first likelihood, is that we would approach them as opposed to a private entity.
Okay.
So we were kind of waiting on them, they said maybe summer, they didn't give us an exact date when they would decide, but we have started that discussion. And they're aware, I did, one of the things they did want, and I guess I need to probably, they'd like to see a letter of request maybe from the city? And perhaps you'd be the one that would, could sign that to say, the city of Goddard is interested if your board decides that you would like to open discussions.
Goddard, you probably, you would want to, we can draw something out. Okay. And I guess the other one is for you also? Like a statement of interest or something. Right, okay. Any progress on drafting a general thing, the rural water district number four? I get it, it's on my list. Okay, that's fine. This is the longest we're, we still number. Yeah, I've forgotten about it. Okay. All right, we have two executive sessions. The first one, we have a motion?
We need a motion. That's a lot of words.
Yeah.
I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters involving non-elected personnel, and executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of non-elected personnel. KSA 7543191, motion to recess into executive session under KSA 7543191 to discuss matters involving non-elected personnel, to include the city attorney, the city clerk, and lieutenant circle. We will reconvene the open meeting in the city council chamber at 9:05 after a five-minute break.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.